Making mistakes is a skill that I've honed over many years. And there's a direct correlation between the likelihood of mistakes from me and the absence of my Opal colleagues from the process. So please don't attribute any of my errors to them. In this case, sometimes I'm lucky that mistakes come with perks. In this case, each of the newsletter subscribers who contacted me about the error also was kind enough to share information that was useful to me. Parents and educators. In the newsletter, I had asked three questions that were, I think, mistake-free. And to them, I was able to add a fourth. So those three questions that were in the newsletter. In the enrollment update, it indicates that only nine children are enrolled this year in the kindergarten class of the African Center Curriculum Program at Oakton School. So one question is, what has the district done to recruit students for the ACC program? Because it seems not to have worked terribly well. What number of students is considered too few students in a classroom? I haven't seen that written down anywhere. And in permitting transfers, what does the district do to prevent the number in a classroom from dropping below the minimum? And the fourth question that I'm able to add is, is race considered in assessing the acceptance of permissive transfer requests? My guess is, from the description at the website, that these are done by lottery, so that no things like race are not considered. But the comments I got from parents and educators this morning, one reflecting on low numbers in classrooms at Bessie Rhodes, one commenting on low numbers in classrooms at Oakton, one commenting on kindergarten classes at Washington, apparently less diverse than they have been in the past. So my question is, would this be a time that perhaps race should somehow be factored in? I don't think necessarily in as something as formal as a sort of an affirmative action type program. But if there's a chance that there are transfers being made simply to avoid diversity, if the district could become aware of that and protect a school like Oakton with a large minority enrollment from suffering drops in their enrollment, suffering through small class sizes, that seems like at least a useful idea to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that gives us a nice segue into our discussion item for the evening, the opening of schools enrollment update. Do we have any opening comments on that?
We do. I will start, and Stacy and I will try to answer as many questions as possible. We may be joined by a couple of our other colleagues. There's a couple events out in the schools tonight, so they're there as well. And then we will, Deela who's taking notes, I will make sure that the questions that are asked that we might not have an answer to, that we can pursue later. What I want to do, we'll pursue later, and then we'll get back to you, and we can post them on the website as well for those who are watching. Let me start with what this report is and what this report isn't. And, you know, we were just talking about sort of the fluidity of our finances as we go into a school year. We're in the same point as we think about enrollment and managing and looking at enrollment in the district. So the enrollment process is an ongoing, very fluid piece where families apply, they come in and then fill out their paperwork. We do the assignment of students in our schools, either in the neighborhood school or through lottery for our magnet schools. We have to enter all the information into the database. And so sometimes what you have in your packet is a newly updated memo that actually has counts that are, they're not that dramatically different than what you've had over the weekend, but we've tweaked them a little bit. And then we also have to, in the enrollment process, submit our numbers to the Illinois State Board of Education, just as a part of the enrollment process. So there's a fluidity that's built into this, and there are a lot of moving parts. What this report is, is an update. It's an update of what we know in a snapshot mode and the one that you have before you as of 5:00 today. But it's not the final report. The final report comes in November, and typically, it's always come in November. And that's after we can actually look at the final landing of kids by the end of September, and we can actually disaggregate and do all the data that we can do. That's also the report, because I know several of you have some questions, where we provide detailed information on enrollment this year in comparison to previous years. And so some of the questions that you might have is, how does this compare to last year or two years ago, three years ago? The opening of schools report, which is provided in November, we'll have that in detail. And typically, we don't do that in this report, because this is an update for the board and for the community to get that snapshot. And because it's changing so much that, and as you've seen, we've changed the versions of this once or twice as we've moved forward to publish this. So the opening of schools report will be able to answer those questions and concerns. And then anything else that comes up tonight, we'll make sure that we can address your concerns appropriately. A couple just bottom lines on this. There are 7,548 kids that are enrolled in the schools. And again, our numbers have fluctuated from being 50 down to being 218 ahead. And so we're pretty close to projections, but since this isn't the final report, the last report I had was that we were 50 down from projections. And we will again finalize this when we get through the final opening schools report.
Is that projected as opposed to the actual?
Yeah, but I have a, yeah, I have a different version. So even my version control is a little bit off as well.
We should be looking at hard.
I apologize. And again, the part of the issues here were that in one of the drafts that we had, and again, I don't want to apologize, this is the way the working draft is in a working board meeting. And it will be finalized when we come forward in November. So we're close to the projections, a little bit over right now from what we projected. But again, this will be finalized once we do the count. These may also change too. Typically, as Northwestern starts, we usually get some students who are being enrolled by families who are Northwestern affiliates who are coming in. In terms of the lottery, we are within the class size guidelines. And again, the class size guidelines range from 23 in kindergarten, 25 in first and second grade, 26 in third grade, 27 in fourth and fifth grade. And so those class size guidelines, we are within the guidelines for our children who have been, who have chosen to and been assigned to our magnet schools. We do have some low enrollments in some of the TWEE programming and Oakton, and which we will be addressing as we move forward. The other details, and I'll save the rest for questions, in this tabulation, Park and Rice are not included in the memo, so we'll also have those numbers for the opening of school. In terms of the, if I may, just to respond to the questions that were just posed, the, give me a second, because I just have them all. I have too much paper. In terms of the recruitment at Oakton as it relates to ACC, I had a quick interchange exchange with Dr. Allen, who's the principal at Oakton. By the early summer, we only had a couple students who had applied to the kindergarten in the ACC. By the opening of school, we had nine students. So we close to tripled the attendance. It's a small number, but this was a set of activities that Dr. Pitts did by providing flyers. We made phone calls to Oakton students and parents of Oakton students. We sent the flyers out. The kindergarten ACC teacher also hosted multiple classroom visits, and the principal hosted some, a couple coffees and meet and greets with the parents. So Dr. Allen and Dr. Pitts, but Dr. Allen especially, who's the principal, is fully committed, as are we, to increase these sort of recruitment opportunities as we move forward. As it relates to the questions of permissive transfers, we transfer children for a wide range of reasons, but when schools have low enrollments, we don't transfer kids out. So in the case of a school like Oakton or some of the other schools where we see that there are low enrollments, we do not cancel things out. On the question about race, I need to double check on that. Right now, we don't use race, and I don't think we can use race. But it's a fair question, but I just wanted to make sure I responded to that. Why don't I stop there and offer questions and concerns that you might have as you've looked through these preliminary data?
Questions?
Just have two about definitions, just to make sure we're all working from the same, because this format's different than what we've seen in the past. So for special ed, what constitutes a special ed student? Because I think it's probably different than IEP, which is typically what we've reported because the numbers are so drastically different. So if you could share what type, who would fall, what kind of students would fall in that category?
Are students with IEPs?
But not all students with IEPs, I'm assuming?
Well, we have, those are just new students that came into the school, into the district this year. That's in that report. We have currently 1,024 students who have IEPs in the district. Those are considered special ed students?
No, I'm, these are just new students?
I, what?
No, this should be totals.
They're totals.
There should be totals, but I think that's kind of why the.
The numbers in here don't add up to that number.
So if you take the K through five. There's a category for K through five in here somewhere.
Yeah, there is. There's 495 total that are.
Yeah, plus the 20-some or something.
And then 288 for middle school.
Yeah, so that would only be 700.
But that doesn't include Park or Rice.
So that's not accurate in terms of the data. We have currently at Park, 72 students at the beginning of the year, and at Rice, 34. So we have over 1,000 special education students. About 200 of those have speech-only IEPs. So that would make about 800 students. But these, this data, 504 is not included, because that's a general ed program, but so this data isn't.
And quite honestly, we were twisting and turning all day today on, and part of the fine tuning here is how the students are registered in our system, in our database. And then there's a quality control piece. We haven't been able to complete the quality control piece. We wanted to make sure we got as best a snapshot as possible. But we were having a hard time pulling out the data on special ed. One of the original drafts had a lot of zeros here. So again, this is part of the, you know, this should be stamped as draft or drafty draft as a way to give a snapshot, and we will fine tune that, especially for the opening of schools.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because that's a percentage that we talk about a lot, and we know that we're, you know, we hover between 10 and 13, depending on the year. That's why I think it jumped out at us, because it was considerably under that, so.
Is that because they're not flagged in SIS properly? That you can't run it accurately?
The flags in SIS should be correct. Because we use it for other things. You know, at this point in the year, and I don't know when he collected the data, September 12th, I collected.
Joyce, I'm sorry, can you make sure you're speaking into a microphone?
I don't know if they collected the data on September 12th. I probably collected it more recently than that, and I took it out of EZIEP. Those two systems don't work together. SIS and EZIEP don't speak to each other. So, you know, I think this is, we may be close, but I think, you know, some of the schools are off.
Okay.
And again, the percentage of kids who are in need of special services has ranged, has been around 13% of the overall student population. So we will confirm that number, and when we do a final report, we'll tell you why there's a difference, plus or minus.
Okay. And then the other question was just in definition of permissive transfer, the schools that they're listed, whether they're, if the number is reflecting, because in the fall enrollment, opening schools report, report both on transfers out and transfers in.
These are transfers in.
Transfers in.
Right. That are recorded.
To that school versus from another.
Correct.
I think just as a note too, and we'll check on this as well, the ESL numbers, I don't appear at this point to include TWEE students, which are also ESL students. So that data set's also incomplete at this point in time.
Well, but they're separate in this report as the SPA.
The SPA. Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, maybe not. Wait, oh, no, I'm looking at, yeah, there's an SPA count, which according to the legend at the top says that's.
Okay, my apologies.
Two-way immersion Spanish speaker.
Apology on me.
SPA and two-way immersion Spanish.
Yes.
And again, I'll be a repeat wheel. This is not a document to which we will make decisions. This is a snapshot document based on, you know, well, as of this morning, but based on September 15-ish data that's running through our system that we've actually, we put into the system.
Well, I do think it's more granular than we've seen in the past, so thank you for that help.
That's what we were attempting.
No, that piece is helpful.
I did want to echo a question or concern that was expressed to me. I see the Oakton kindergarten gen ed number is 10. And what was expressed to me was that there was a concern by some Oakton families about how populated their school was and how many permissive transfers were being allowed out of Oakton. And so.
The gen ed section is a total of 23. There are 10 female and 13 male. So the number is still small, but it is.
When I just looked under kindergarten, Oakton, not disaggregated by binary genders, it says gen ed 10. Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, but then the top is female.
Am I, oh, wait, or is it different on the paper documents?
Next table down, gen ed 23. This one says 21.
And that's split between two classes.
That's currently split between two classes.
So on average, it's still.
Still small.
Yeah. So do we track how many permissive transfers are coming out of particular schools, and is that factored into whether or not permissive transfers are granted?
Yes. And so in a case like Oakton, is what I tried to say earlier, when a school has a smaller student population, we limit the number of permissive transfers out, because that would then have an undue harm on the student population at the sending school.
So I'm curious, do we, so in the opening of schools report, the official one, is it indicated how many permissive transfers came out of?
Yeah.
And that becomes a, at least for me, where you're going is an important one, which is what are our policies and procedures around permissive transfers, and where do we put limits, and where do we say no, and where do we say yes? I think that's an important conversation to have.
Yeah, at the very, I mean, I think that it's important for us to have an honest conversation about the impact and what schools are paying undue weight of that impact, and why, and what can be done to address that. But I understand you also said this is fluid and not decision-making.
And permissive transfers will occur for siblings that are already at different schools and for, I believe, for special education status as well.
To add to Anya's question and to our public comment, in terms of minimum in classrooms, you know, when we have such small classrooms, is that ever a concern in terms of resources, in terms of delivery of curriculum? There are some really small classrooms, and I'm just curious how we go about addressing those.
The, so yes, there are some very small classrooms in a couple specific situations. With ACC kindergarten, we've made a specific commitment to really try, so we did do, we did do a few different things with recruiting last winter. We really tried to brand ACC as one of three different academic options as you enter the buildings, either TWE, ACC, or King Arts as a magnet, and fourth being your standard general education program. We increased presence at kindergarten information nights. We also had, the kindergarten information night here had a focus on ACC presentation as well. Clearly, I would agree with Alice that our work has not netted the impact yet that we hope for. One of the things that I think we really need to do, and I think we can use help from board members, from other individuals in the community, is to uplift some of the good things that are happening at Oakton. What we see somewhat within the enrollment report is that enrollment generally at Oakton and in ACC is not where we know it can be, want it to be, and believe it should be. And so we are going to continue to look and try to shift practices to increase the marketing efforts that we put into ACC and programs at Oakton in general. But I think also, you know, we had a really nice report and a good story to go with Oakton last spring. And really trying to spread the word of some of the good work that is going on at Oakton and some of the hard work and commitment that is there, and the positive experiences that many children are having, I think is a really important role that any and all of us can play in helping to address some of this. We had a commitment, you know, some of these numbers came in shorter than we wanted them to be, but we felt like we'd made a commitment to community and to school to really work on delivering education there, and then work and look at those numbers to make appropriate adjustments in the future. But we do agree, and the numbers aren't where we want or hope for them to be.
Do we ever offer families who are already there and in gen ed the opportunity to transfer into that program?
100%.
And is that something, conversations that are being had?
So there, we do, yes, we do actually open, we do definitely open up that conversation. Dr. Allen's been helpful with that, and Deborah Osher, Dr. Osher's been helpful with that. We also sent out a communication to all kindergarten families to let them know that this opportunity, just prior to, an additional one, just prior to enrollment, and attached some of the article and kind of positive news around Oakton to that communication. And so we definitely have made that available. And, you know, what we are working against is in some families, some families have been very candid with us about some of what they've heard as far as myths. And so we've worked on debunking some of those myths and helping people realize that it's a very strong academic program that is navigating the same grade level curriculum in a way that's lifting up collective values and Afrocentric beliefs, you know, that is appropriate for Black students as well as students from other races and ethnicities.
And although I just said that on permissive transfers, we don't allow schools with small class sizes to permissibly transfer out, this year, if a family expressed interest in the ACC, we waived that because we wanted to recruit and encourage people to come in. The other part of your question, Rebecca, was that, which I think is really important is, and it's a longer-term conversation around class sizes and what's small enough, and it's what Alice Berry just asked as well, which is a pertinent question. So we have class size guidelines that range between 23 and 27, plus two before we, if they get large, before we add a teacher's assistant in the classroom. The flip of that is what's small enough to have an educator, you know, if we're teaching in a class of 14 or 15. If you combine two classes, depending on what the classes would be, that would be a class of 27 or 28. So there's a, depending on what the size of the school is. So we have to look at patterns over time and then make some choices that are about staffing choices when appropriate.
Right. I just, you know, I think there's also the issue of isolation. I know that in the past, there already are issues of isolation for that group. So given a small classroom and then being in a different wing of the school, just being able to maybe, if that classroom size is going to stay small, have some potential collaborations with the other classrooms so that it's not, you know, such a tiny classroom. And I don't know if that's been done before, but I'm just thinking that it's a very small group, and if we don't get any more students in there, I'd just be curious how, I think through the process of debunking and helping the Oakton community itself understand ACC, we need to get students and families exposed to change that narrative around that program.
So one of the things that Mr. Williams did do last year is that the ACC is no longer in an ACC wing. They are within their grade level clusters, and so there's that, and we are, we've had conversations about what are opportunities for collaboration, or shared learning, or shared academic blocks with other classes. So, you know, we're in conversation on that. We haven't arrived at what best solutions are, but we are looking for opportunities for collaboration. Oakton also runs their specials in, by mixing the sections from TWE, ACC, and the two general ed. So when they go to the arts or PEE, they're intermixed with students from other classes. And so that also is intentionally done to help address some of those isolations and build relationships across other classrooms. So agreed, and we will look at other options.
Okay.
Two quick questions. One of them is about ACC marketing and wondering if there was anything done at the preschools and daycares? Information given to parents at that point in time, stuff in backpacks and cubbies, that kind of thing? Just to not require parents to have to attend a session at a building? It might just be a challenge, or hosting a webinar online or something like that?
Yeah, we did not, we did not do, so from the district level, as a part of the kindergarten piece, we did not do a particular kind of preschool info blast out, but that is something certainly we can consider. We do, we did specifically run a session at JEH, so we, for JEH, that particular audience. So we're certainly open, and I think what we want to figure out is where are the places to build the best and most strategic partnerships.
Got it.
The other thing is, if I may, Dr. Allen in his email to me talks about using a video to be able to disseminate what's really interesting in the school. And he and we are more than open to host families who want to come in during the school year and see what's going on. Very excited about the educational process there. And I think his only lament is he wishes he would have started a little bit earlier so he could have been out and doing some of the recruiting. And we've been encouraging him to work with us to figure out the best way to really reach out into multiple communities. So I like this idea a lot. Also, oh, sorry, go ahead.
My other question was unrelated to that, so if it was something that.
I was just thinking that like every spring, your principals have a captive audience of incoming families talking about their school, and they should be able to carry the voice of ACC and TWE, just like you would expect Michael to at Oakton. And like when I went to kindergarten roundup, it would be awesome if that were something that my school principal said, hey, here are the district programs that we're proud of. One of the options obviously is here, and you came here because of proximity or whatever the circumstances or where you live, but here are the other things that exist too, and I know about that and can talk to you about that.
And we have been, the last two years with kindergarten information nights, there've been ACC specific, two years ago, there was an ACC specific set of slides and video. This past year, we lifted up the program options and then had information tables outside and had essentially flyers and brochures to hand out to families there to get them to come to. All right, I got to work on that side. So we went to six target schools. I'm pretty sure Walker was one of them, but I'll have to check him with my friends.
I was there.
All right.
The other question I had was about Orington first grade. And it's, the question is highlighted because of the relatively. And it's, the question is highlighted because of the relatively massive first grade class at Orington, but relates to more general question about how do we handle a situation like that in general when there is just a one outlet in class in a particular building? It seems that that's probably, I've already heard like some feedback from parents that that just seems like a prime situation for there to be a relatively chaotic environment for the building. So how do we, what do we do about that?
So, you know, last year, Research Accountability and Data did take some very specific steps when they realized the size of the class coming in. And at that point, they did offer the opportunity for families to transfer to a number of schools. There was very low reception on that idea that was within the first two weeks of school. And the reason, you know, Brad did not see this bubble coming. And so as soon as they realized it was there, they worked to try to provide some options. And so what they have done at this point is really kind of closed down permissive transfers in to, to keep that class from growing any larger, which is also why we see that the kindergarten class behind it is very small because they work to be very conservative. And at the moment, I think our options are somewhat limited because if people live in the bounds and do want to attend in that first grade space, we just really need to make sure that we're putting the supports in place to create a positive learning environment, supporting teachers with materials and, you know, that appropriate level of support to be successful with classes of that size.
We're more than willing to entertain families and students who wish to apply to Bessie Rhodes or King or the ACC program as well. And then I think as Stacy said, if you look at the numbers on kindergarten in Orington, they're dramatically different because we changed, we, we changed the transferring in, the numbers of children who are transferring.
I can imagine, being a parent of a few kindergartners now at this point, that two weeks into kindergarten, that there wouldn't be very many takers on that transfer situation?
Right.
For this particular instance.
I'm talking about the first graders. I mean, to mitigate the first grade issue because that was so large last year, those families would be more than welcome to, to, to apply. The, the other thing, Orington has the proximity to Northwestern. When we get a little bit of a Northwestern bump because grad students or others come and enroll, Orington usually feels that as well.
So do we not, do we not, I guess, we'll, we'll answer November potentially, but for this particular class, were there a lot of permissive, permissive transfers into Orington that were granted that possibly we overextended permissive transfers in?
On the first grade class?
I think we'd have to go back and take a look at data. I know we allowed, we allowed fewer, but we'd have to go back and look at last year's report to see where that nets out. You know, again, the, the general enrollment from the, the neighborhood base was larger than expected, which, you know, because they really work to follow historical averages when they make their decisions. And so, you know, it is, you know, they, that was one step. They took several steps in order to try to help mitigate that situation. And at the moment, you know, we're, we have people that are committed to being there, and we're committed to making sure that it's a positive educational experience.
I mean, again, typically every year, every year that I've been here, the, our projections are fairly close, you know, give or take a hundred kids or so. And then we have an isolated spot or two where things, things sort of bump up. So Lincoln was that way a couple of years ago. And we, we did the best we could to mitigate that by offering options in our magnet schools. And that, and our magnet schools are great programs, and they're also places where we do enrollment management to be able to, to ease the flow a little bit.
It would be helpful in these grids in the future, maybe just next to the school name, to know how many sections exist at that grade level. Because when you see, right, when you see seventy-five kids at Orington next to the eighty-eight at Washington, the number of sections is what matters, right?
And the opening schools report will help that.
And I just wanted to note something that I don't necessarily know that there, what the solution is, but it always makes me feel a little uncomfortable when we focus on gender binaries, given that we also pass trans-inclusive policy, that we don't have a gender non-conforming option, and that it's not a part of how we disaggregate or discuss data. I just imagine that for some folks, it must feel exclusionary when they look at this data and the fact that we still call out gender binaries and don't leave a space for other identities.
Similarly, I think I know what you mean by the gender, by the gen ed line. But all students are gen ed students. And then they also have exceptionalities. And so, that, right, if I'm a sped student, I, am I in both places? Because I should be, but I'm not in this grid.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Anya. We were working and making great progress, school by school, on being very open and very sensitive to the identification of gender. And the question is whether or not, this is a bureaucratic question, of whether or not our systems, we can add extra categories and then whether or not parents will, will click the extra categories as well.
I think to Anya's point though, we have the policy now, and there's a disconnect between our policy and then how we're collecting, I would imagine too, and also reporting the information. So it's something that I think is worth following up on and, and and considering changing for next year's registration.
I would just be cautious to, kind of like if you were to, if you were to give us data on the permissive transfers, if the numbers become so few, then we're actually talking about people that can be identified.
Right.
And it's helpful for there to be enough of a mask.
Right, right. And I don't know right yet what the state rules are for this then. So I'm more than willing to go forward and be absolutely sensitive and reflect what we care about. We still may have to report to the state on that binary. I bet we do, and so we'll have to pay attention to that as well.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear that I'm not suggesting that if a sample size is so small that it's identifying, that we discuss it in a public fashion. I'm just discussing that the way we collect data should allow folks to feel visible. And the way we discuss data should allow folks to feel fully visible. Yeah.
Agreed. Going on to sort of the idea of transfers and class sizes, you know, I, before the meeting, sent a question around Bessie Rhodes. And I know we might not have like full, complete data yet here to talk about this, and maybe we can have this discussion more fully at the, when we do discuss the opening of schools report. But the overall enrollment, overall enrollment for the school is according, well, actually, I don't know if that's true anymore. On the report that I looked at was two sixty-three. I don't know if that number changed significantly, but I think it's down probably from what it was last year, which again, after the TWE discussion, that was to be somewhat expected that-
It was three hundred and thirty-six in seventeen eighteen.
Okay. And then, so it's definitely going to be somewhere lower than that. And while I think it's good to note that individual classrooms are not over-enrolled, I do think it's good to have the discussion of what are optimal school sizes? Because what are, where did those students go? And is that straining common spaces at schools, even if it isn't necessarily straining individual classrooms? So I think that's something that's worth thinking about, worth analyzing. What did the transfers out of Bessie Rhodes do to other school sizes as opposed to just classroom sizes? And are there, are there any schools that we think are, at this point, maybe getting to be close to the point where common spaces? And I'm thinking particularly lunchtime and indoor recess when, when inclement weather comes, that those things become more challenging.
We can certainly look at it when we finalize the numbers. I know our initial analysis, when we looked over the number, the summer, was that the impact of students was relatively well dispersed. And that the initial look at it was that there wasn't a disproportionate, that kind of a significant impact in any of the schools that were receiving at that point in time. But we can certainly take another look.
Okay.
I think, we stand by that, and I think Walker received a few more, and Shute received a few more, and that's the obvious based on the community that is where Bessie Rhodes is.
Right. But Walker's also a school that's, you know, is a smaller school generally. So is the addition again, even if it doesn't impact class sizes negatively, is it affecting other things? And also just, I wanted to highlight, you know, one of the things that we talked about last year in adding TWE classrooms was to be able to get our TWE classes more to the optimal fifty-fifty native Spanish speakers, native English speakers. And at least according to this report, it looks like we have done that pretty much in all of our classes, or in all of our TWE classes. At least for the kindergarten level, obviously, first through fifth are still out of whack. But I think that is encouraging, and that's exactly what we were hoping for with the, with the addition of those classrooms. So I'm glad to see that that's the case.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, well then-
And again, I just want to reiterate the, the, thank you for taking this as what it is, which is a fluid document that's in the process of changing. And I think one of the things that we've done, typically, we've given this document as an information piece, but we wanted to have a more full conversation so we can get the detailed questions. So as we do the, the opening of school report, we can actually tweak that. So I appreciate the patience with what is a fluid document as we continue the enrollment process and start the year.
Great. Thank you. Okay, well, with no further business to come before the board, I find this meeting adjourned at seven-ten PM. New record.